A little bit of a delay to get that final report. We weren't issuing the financial statements until, you know, closer to November, early, early December. So by doing the audit remotely, it has allowed for the audit to get turned around in its entirety a lot quicker by saving on that travel time. And again, it's not as disruptive to the, the staff there because we can accumulate questions, get it to them, and then they can get us back to us on their time. And then the cloud-based BSNA, this was the first time I've gotten to experience that. I, I did get to work in it a little bit at the tail end here. And I just wanna let you know that it's well worth your money. It, it's great to have the ability to access your records from wherever, you know? We typically have come in through the VPN and I just wanna give a plug that that was money well spent because it was very, very nice for us and it seems to be user, very user-friendly for you guys as well. So my name is Tori. I've been working with Ed on the City of Manistee's audit for at least four of the five years that I have been here in Anderson Town, but if not all five. I have been the auditor in charge of the audit the last two years. And then Ken Talzma has been the partner in charge for many years. He was then able to be here today to, to go through this with me and sees out on another client and wasn't gonna make it back. So I'm just kinda, kinda go through the financial statements, the areas that I find to be the most important, but feel free to interrupt at any time if you need clarification or you want me to cover something that maybe I skipped over because I, I didn't find it. You know, it didn't stand out to me to just talk about. And I do have some graphs that I know you typically review ahead of time, but I kinda forgot about them until last minute, but I do have them. So I'll share my screen just to briefly look at anything there. Sometimes it's easier to look at some trends in that manner.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah. So we're gonna start, I just like to look at the table of contents just to kinda show what makes up the financial statements for anybody who might be, if for you to review it's your first time, really looking at them in detail. So we have our auditor's report, which that comes from us. This is, that's where our opinion on the financial statements is addressed. Management's discussion and analysis, that's a required section of the financial statements required by Yellow Book. And that kinda gives a very broad overview of the, the city's various, various things within the city for the year. The basic financial statements are broken down into the government-wide financial statements, the fund financial statements, proprietary funds, fiduciary funds. And then the component units are reported in the city's financial statements. But these component units are discreetly presented, which means they're included because they need the definition to be recognized based on various levels of control financially, whether the city appoints the members on it. So that evaluation's done behind the scenes. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on the component units, but they are reported in the financial statements of the city for that reason. There's the notes to the financial statements. This next, next section here requires supplementary information. So this is again required by Yellow Book. It goes over the pension schedules and then the budgets of the general fund and all major special revenue funds, which for you guys is major street, local street. The supplementary information is just information to combine various funds to bring them to the front financial statements. And then last, which is special to Yellow Book audits, which is governmental audits, is our report on compliance with laws and regulations. So we'll go right into the auditor's report here. So it starts off by expressing the opinion that we as auditors gave to the City of Manistee. There's four different types. There's a qualified opinion, which is a, I'm sorry, not qualified. It's an unqualified opinion is clean. A qualified opinion means everything is clean with the exception of one area. So I like to give the example of if, if there was cash saved, cash wouldn't, couldn't reconcile and that was just the one area that is materially misstated, then that would be a qualified opinion. There's a disclaimer of opinion, which means something isn't following either GAAP. So for example, if there was a pension, if MERS didn't handle the actuarial evaluation to allow us to do, report it correctly under GASB and the city didn't take that upon themselves to get that report done and that information couldn't be presented correctly in the financial statements, that would be a disclaimer of opinion. And then adverse opinion means that the financial statements are materially misstated and we as auditors are going to state that opinion. So an adverse would be the worst of the worst. So the City of Manistee this year received an unqualified opinion once again, although the financial statements aren't, they don't word it in that manner in that second paragraph there when it says, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the different opinion units for the City of Manistee for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2024." We do point out that we did not audit the City of Manistee Housing Commission. So although they're included in the audit as a component unit, that's all they are is reported based on the other auditor's financial statement. So we do not form an opinion on anything from, from the housing commission. The basis for our opinions, so again, this is a, a GAS audit is what we like to call it under the governmental auditing standards or a Yellow Book audit. So we perform our audit in accordance with those standards and then we issue our opinion on the financial statements accordingly. We'll go over here next, the auditor's responsibilities versus management's responsibilities. So management is actually the one who is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. Anderson Townman is engaged to prepare them, but ultimately we're preparing them based on the financial records that Ed provides and that's all that we're doing. So anything that is different, so adjusting journal entries, anything that we would find to be a significant reconciliation, those things are addressed later on because those would be outside of the scope of our financial statement preparation. So ultimately, management is responsible for the financial statements and they're also responsible for designing and implementing internal controls within the city to help protect the city against material misstatement, whether that be due to fraud or error. Something relatively new in the auditor's report is also management's responsibility for evaluating the city's ability to continue on beyond a year. So if there's any events or conditions that exist that would lead you to believe that they couldn't, they're required to let us know there's been nothing noted that shows any indication that the city isn't going to continue beyond a year. The auditor's responsibilities are to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free from material misstatement. And so what that means is we're not, reasonable assurance is a high level of assurance, but it's not absolute. So there's no guarantee that something doesn't get detected. Our job isn't to look for fraud as much as some people might think that that's our responsibility. It, it's not. We design our tests to do the best to detect those material misstatements. But when fraud is occurring, it can involve collusion or forgery or intentional emissions and sometimes those things are a little bit harder to catch because there's multiple people involved. So again, we don't look at every single transaction when we, when we do an audit. We do exercise professional judgment and maintain professional skepticism. So we try to rotate staff on the job as, as we can, just to have a new set of eyes here and there. But always approaching each year is an audit as a, a new year and, and fresh thoughts and ideas. We are required to do a risk assessment for any areas that we find there could be a risk of fraud, any deficiencies in internal controls, anything to that level. So we do do an intense risk assessment at the beginning of the audit. Some of that is communicated to the city council at the beginning. I typically always send a letter whether or not it's read or not. But most of the time, it's for the City of Manistee in particular, the identified risks are those risks that GAS says every local government has. So that's management override of controls and improper revenue recognition. So those are things that you can't really mitigate because the GAS, GAS standards say that it has to be a risk. So that's a good thing. We obtain an understanding of the internal controls, but we do not express an opinion on how effective they're work, working. We evaluate accounting policies and we make recommendations if we feel that there can be improvements and determine that they're reasonable and in accordance with GAAP. And then lastly, going back to the conditions or events that could lead, lead management to believe that the city couldn't continue on beyond a year, we evaluate those if there are any. That last sentence there kinda goes back to the letter. We are required to communicate with those charged with governance, so the city council, with the plan, scope and timing of the audit, any risks we identify. And then at the end here, we'll go over the letter where we address any internal control-related matters or any significant audit findings that we come across during our audit. The last, these next two paragraphs here just kind of reiterate the required supplementary information, what it is. We do not express an opinion on the required supplementary information. We, because we don't have, we can only perform limited procedures on what it is. So that's the, the budget and the pension schedules. Supplementary information, we do form an opinion on. That's our combining non-major funds and component unit financial statements. I know I'm missing the word statements in that paragraph there and I, I've already noted it, if you catch that. And that last paragraph there just states what our reporting requirements are under GAS and that's addressing internal controls and describing the scope that we're testing them and then any non-compliance with laws and regulations. Any questions there? So our management's discussion and analysis, this is where I'm gonna kinda go through our graphs because I find this to be a better way to present. So are you able to see the graphs?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I'm just gonna go through them this way because I think if I do it full screen, it ends up taking up both of my screens. Okay, so here is the statement of net, net position. This is a, a two-year analysis of, we're gonna go through the assets and deferred outflows, the liabilities and deferred inflows and then net position. So this is the city as a whole. This is including our governmental activities and our business-type activities. So everything came in asset and deferred outflow-wise pretty comparable and consistent to the prior year. The, the biggest swing here, so investments, obviously those are gonna be based on the market trends. You know, markets up, you guys have quite a bit of investments in your oil and gas fund. And so those are heavily sensitive to any market fluctuations there. The deferred outflows, those are related to MERS and your pensions. So those are gonna also fluctuate for various reasons, which we'll get into when we talk about the pension. Did you have something, Ed?
No, I just had a cough, sorry, excuse me.
Oh, that's okay, that's okay. So our liabilities and deferred inflows here, so again, nothing too crazy that due to other governmental units, which is gonna vary year to year. That's money that's due to the DDA. Continuing to pay down your debt, which we'll get into there. The deferred inflows, same thing, those relate to MERS. This also relates to leases, which there was new accounting standards last year that changed how leases get reported. So we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit. Part of it was the significant decrease, part of it had to do with a lease that was terminated and so the adjustment that was necessary to get that off the books. And then there was a prior period adjustment due to an error in the initial calculation of GAS B7 last year. So that brought the deferred inflows down quite a bit compared to last year. So here's net position and, and this is the, the difference between the two slides that we just talked about here. And so net position ended in 2024 for the entire city at $43,551,246,000. And so if you look at the MDNA there, that, well, I won't get into that quite yet. I got ahead of myself. So the unrestricted net assets there, the $596,338, that is the, the money that's available to meet the city's ongoing obligations to city, the city, to citizens and creditors. The net investment in capital assets, which is a majority of your net position, that is money that is invested in capital assets and reduced by any debt. And the, the difference there, we like to clarify that the, the purpose or funds used to reduce debt have to be outside of that because you can't liquidate the, the assets to pay for the debt. They're, they're one and the same essentially. So that's the net investments and capital assets, the big portion of your net position. We don't really look at, this number isn't as valuable per se as the, the fund balance that we'll get into, into the governmental activities because it's so heavily swayed by those investment in capital assets and you guys have quite a bit of them, as you can see. And then restricted assets, those are restricted based on either purpose. So you know, whether it's a grant or Act 51, major and local street funds, those funds are restricted, your oil and gas fund, those are restricted. So those are funds that are restricted for a specific purpose, whether it be by the grant or et cetera. So here are all the governmental funds and the different revenue sources of all the governmental funds. So again, very comparable to last year. There was no federal grants, not that there was a ton in 2023. That 2022 had to do with ARPA funding when all the COVID money was coming out. So federal sources, we didn't have a single audit this year. So that makes sense there, everything else. Over time, I know 2022, we've made some changes to how certain things get reported in the financial statements. So like the fines and forfeitures, that has gotten broken out since, if, if you're wondering what a change from zero and I like to point that out. Investment earnings, obviously those are based on those market fluctuations. The expenditures of all the governmental funds here, so these are based on function. For that community and economic development, that is your zoning and planning primarily. And in the past, that wasn't broken out and it was included. And I believe, I believe it was in public, Public Works or the general government. So that's since been broken out to be in compliance with the Michigan Charter of Accounts there. Other expenditures, we've tried to do a better job of actually allocating those up into the general government category. Capital outlet, that's gonna vary year to year based on your capital project plans and any planned improvements you have going on in the, the governmental funds. So here's the fund balance, which I, I think is a better evaluation of kinda the health of the city. The red flags to the state of Michigan are to see three consecutive years of decrease. So fund balance did go down in the general fund this year, but until it's three years, the state isn't really concerned. Another way that they like to look at the health of a local government is they like to see the fund balance be 10 to 15% of budgeted expenditures for the general fund. So if we go back here to our expenditures of all the governmental funds, I guess that's the, that's only the general fund in itself. Let me get that percentage. I was so prepared that I wasn't prepared. Seven, three, nine, two, eight. Yeah, so your expenditures for the general fund this year and granted, not so much the budget, but you guys still came within the budget of your general fund. So your total expenditures in the general fund this year were $7,389,293. So 10% of that is a little over $700,000. So you're still looking very healthy in terms of fund balance, even though you had that decrease this year. And that's just gonna happen with spending and, and revenue, you know, revenue fall short or original grant plan or anything along those lines. So here is the water and sewer funds and these are the different operating revenues there. State grants, those are gonna vary year to year based on various projects that you have going on and the funding from them. You guys do a, Ed does a good job of keeping track of your grants in the, in a grant fund and allocating accordingly there, which is very nice and appreciated on our end. The water and sewer funds, the operating expenses, so these are broken down by function per se, but these are broken down more by category. I like to point out the personnel services, those also include the change in the pension calculation. So that runs through personnel services. So sometimes an increase or decrease doesn't necessarily mean that there was a significant amount of additional spending or less spending there cash-wise because that change and that adjustment does run through there. And we'll briefly look at the statement of cash flow so you can see what I'm talking about and how much of that impacted personnel services. Contracted services, those are gonna vary year to year based on individual needs. I know supplies went up a little bit this year because of the cost of the sewer treatment plan and those chemicals. We've seen that kind of across the board. Utilities, those are up, those kind of, those also include the funds that you guys get from, I don't have it off the top of my head. I'll have to get back to you on that increase.
No, Tori, the, the utility increases because we're running a brand-new headworks and a bunch of big pumps once, once we started the thing up. So we basically got like a second mini-plant that just takes a lot more electricity.
Okay. Yeah, I try, I try to refresh as much as I would like to remember every single thing that happens.
You don't, so I'm happy to step in, but that, that's the reason why the utilities are up. Plus there's, there's gas costs to heat the new headworks facility too.
Okay, thank you. Everything else is pretty comparable here miscellaneous, that's gonna vary year to year. That just holds our other expenses that, that come up. There's various accounts that we don't feel necessary to break out on our individuals' own, so they just kinda all get bumped into miscellaneous. So we don't, we don't go over questions yet. That's just kind of a brief overview of the overall, the, the relative important information of the individual funds. We'll go back into the MDNA here. So there's those financial highlights, which all would have been addressed going through these graphs. The overview of the financial statements, something I do like to point out, the reason why fund balance and net position vary so much. The government-wide financial statements are reported on a full accrual method of accounting. So they have more of a future focus with the fixed assets being the, and the debt being the main two items there. At the fund level, it's on the modified accrual, which is more of a current outlook. So we're looking at current expenditures, so current debt service, current purchases of fixed assets. So that's the main difference between our government-wide and our fund and how we get there. There's some reconciliations further on. So this just goes over the different types of funds and whatnot that the city has. There's the governmental funds and the proprietary funds. Proprietary funds consist of your business types, so water, sewer, your boat launch, your marina. And then it also includes internal service fund. But on the government-wide, the internal service fund actually moves into the governmental activities. Nothing of major importance there, so we'll keep going. There's a condensed statement of net position, kinda goes through what I've already talked about there. Little bit more detailed in the graphs, but shows a comparative view. Same with the statement of changes in net position. So we have a few graphs here. This first one isn't really my favorite graph because it, it makes it look like we're spending so much more money in these various functions than the revenue sources that they have. And where I think that this graph is, graph is kind of flawed is, is not accounting for our general revenue sources. So all of our property taxes, the marijuana taxes, payments in lieu of taxes. So those items, investment earnings, they're not allocated by function because they're considered general revenue sources. So I always say take this graph with a grain of salt. It's more just kinda showing you the breakdown again of the functions there, comparing it against the revenue that is specific to the function. There's a pie chart there that shows a breakdown of the revenue by source. So your taxes are always gonna be your, your big revenue source there, followed by grants and other contributions, state revenue sharing being a major state, state source, also not included in the allocation up there. Investment earnings on your oil and gas fund. Next page here is, this one is a little bit more useful when we look at the expenses and revenue in the water sewer fund, the various enterprise funds here and, and kinda how things are going there. It's a more visual view of how the revenue and expenditures fall for those individual funds for the year. Next page here, I like to point out, which we'll briefly look at the budgets, but the general fund had budgeted expenditures under spent by $439,060 when we compare it to the final budget. And then revenues came in more than anticipated by 100, a little over 149,000. So things look good in the general fund. Capital assets, you guys have about $62 million of capital assets net of accumulated depreciation across the governmental and the business-type activities. This was, although there were some capital, there was a good amount of capital outlay this year. It wasn't, no major items to note like you had in the past with your major sewer project with the USDA bond. When we saw quite a bit of change in the capital assets there. Long-term debt, the city continues to pay off debt. I believe the, we'll look at, we'll look at that footnote, but continue to make all those debt payments on time, have a healthy amount of debt. The, the only new debt this year was that Eagle Gateway redevelopment project that you guys have that's part grant, part loan. So there was some draws on that loan this year and then the purchase of the new plow truck. But other than that, debt was, is moving on the downward trend. Anything highlighted in yellow just means it still needs updated. It's not critical to the financial statements. You'll also see when we get to it with the component units that are highlighted in yellow. I have that highlighted because there's a chance that the DDA could change. I have the tentative numbers in there, but since we're not addressing that, we're not going over that in detail today since that is a separate audit. I just kept it highlighted for the ease of updating if, if needed. So if you see yellow, that is what that means. So that's the MDNA. I'm not gonna go through the, every financial statement. I think we've already gone over the, the major trends there. I did wanna point out on page. I did wanna point out on, um, page sixteen and page eighteen, you'll see that reconciliation there at the bottom of page sixteen, which shows how we come from the, the governmental fund financial statements to the government-wide and what items make up that conversion. Um, and then page eighteen is its impact on, um, the statement of activity, so the income statement side per se. We'll also go down to the statement of cash flow that I said we briefly look at on page twenty-one. So you'll see at the bottom there where it shows the, the changes in assets and liabilities. So our, of that amount of, uh, personnel expenses, if you look at the deferred outflows for the pension items, that, uh, positive means that it's actually a negative outflow of cash. So we have a negative outflow of cash there and the net pension liability and the deferred inflows for leases, those actually follow the direction. So we show that the expense changed by about a hundred, about a hundred and seventy-four thousand of that being related to our, our pension changes, so. That's gonna vary year to year. Fiduciary funds, these are just funds, um, where the money is, is passing through, so it's not that of the city. It's your tax delinquent and current tax collection funds. You taxpayers pay, you collect the money and then you disperse it out to the various county and, and other, um, local governments.
Can we change this?
Component units are next, that's just.
Schedule, we're only looking at this.
You wanna have, put the audit up, share our screen that way? Would that be easier? She's just going to this. Tori, can you share your screen where you're actually scrolling through the audit? It'd be a little easier. It might be easier for them to follow.
I'm going along, but still.
Do you see that?
Yes.
Is it too small if I go to the width? Whoops.
Good for you, Wes.
That's good, yeah. That's, that's probably good right there. That's too small there, probably.
Too small? Okay. Okay. Uh, so component units, again, I'm not gonna spend too much time here. Their, the numbers for it, the D D A are, um, probably final, but in the case that they do change, cause that audit isn't finalized quite yet.
And Tori, just cause you mentioned earlier the Housing Commission, we've had a lot of problems with them over the years. We actually got their audit kind of in time this year.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, those, those numbers are final.
So that's, that's really positive, I think. It just shows that the new management over there is doing a better job of keeping on top of things.
Yeah, and I think they expect for it to even, because it was still late in terms of state deadlines.
Right.
But it was significantly earlier than in years past. So I do think that their goal next year is to be done on time. So hopefully that, uh, that happens, cause yeah, that was a, a big improvement from prior years. So here's just the, um, change in net position side. So next follows the notes to the financial statements. Uh, this first section is a summary of significant accounting policies. Um, nothing major to note here. I'll go back to the component units. So there are two types of component units. There's a blended component unit, which means it's actually included in the financial statements of the city. Then the discreetly presented component units are those ones that we just looked at above. Um, again, based on various evaluations and levels of control that are a little more in-depth. Um, so the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority is your only blended component unit, so that's reported as a special revenue fund of the city. Um, this just goes over, again, the difference between the government-wide and the fund financial statements and how various things are measured. I can go through this section pretty quick. Different types of funds that you guys have. So, uh, there, the component unit notes are sprinkled in here where it's felt that it's an important accounting policy. So if you do see Housing Commission or D D A, those items, um, those will be in here. A lot of accounting policies. So the fund balance breakout, I'll quickly go over this. Um, non-spendable funds are funds that cannot be spent cause they're either not in a spendable form or legally or contractually required to remain intact. So that includes, um, prepaid expenses, inventory, um, those items are considered non-spendable, restricted, we already kind of went over that. Committed, there are amounts that can be only used for a specific purpose that's imposed by a formal action by, um, the government's highest level of decision-making authority, so that's the city council. Um, aside funds are intended to be used for a specific purpose, but don't meet the criteria to be classified as restricted or formally committed. And then unassigned is, is the same as unrestricted there, and that's the, what's left. Cash and investments, nothing really, um, major here. There is some detail on what the restricted cash is restricted for, um, in the, the various funds. Nothing crazy from prior years, those are pretty consistent. Um, mostly capital improvements or other plans for capital improvements. You guys have, um, the sewer and water fund, those, a big one is your bond reserves that are set by the USDA. So they have an amount of money that they require the city to set aside to, um, show that you're able to pay for your debt down the road. Um, investments here, just a, again, nothing here, it's shattering there. I do like to point out on this next page, and it, it's almost impossible, um, to fully be F D I C covered, um, when you have the amount of cash that a local government has. Um, but I do like to point out that at the end of the year, a, a good portion of your cash was exposed to credit risk because it's uninsured or uncollaterized. And that means that essentially the F D I C coverage is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per bank, per, um, type, so demand deposit or time and saving. And so, um, a lot of the city's cash is exposed to the risk of something were to happen. You guys are, um, your cash is with a, you know, a, a solid reputable bank, but we can't say that we've never seen it happen, no. It, you know, if something goes wrong with the bank. So just something to keep in mind, I'm not saying to go change all of your, you know, go put money in every single local bank, but, um, a good portion of your cash is, is uninsured. Um, these are just kinda going over state regulations and requirements there. Here's some more detail on the bond reserves, um, what's required and what your actual balance is. It does a good job of those calculations. Capital assets here, so here's our governmental activities. The major expenditures this year on the governmental side was there were some city hall improvements to your stairs, the fire station had some improvements. Um, there's always costs associated with roadwork, um, whether it be the Act fifty-one, non-Act fifty-one roadwork. It always seems to be a major, um, expenditure on the governmental side. And then also, as I said, the Internal Service Fund falls into this. So, um, any of, you guys bought quite a few trucks and tractors and mowers and whatnot in the Internal Service Fund that rolls into here. Business type activities, um, again, a low, a low capital outlay year there with your sewer project, your big project being wrapped up last year. Let's get past the Housing Commission. Transfers, um, transfers are eliminated at the government-wide level, um, but this is just how the funds, um, due to, due from. So those are just current funding to various funds based on needs and, and those are current. So they're expected to be liquidated in the next year. Um, and then transfers, most of your transfers are, um, budgeted and planned for at the beginning of each year. Long-term debt, so here's just an overview of the, the current debt that the city holds. Um, again, this general obligation refunding bond was paid off this year. Two of the plow trucks were paid off this year on the governmental side of things. Quite a bit of debt still in your water and sewer funds, which is typical. Here are the upcoming, um, debt service requirements for the governmental and business type activities. This, leases. So here's our M R S, um, that we'll briefly go over here. I'm gonna bring you to the net pension liability schedule. You can read all that fund, uh, fund information if you'd like. So I do like to point out that a lot of the net pension liability calculation is based on actuarial assumptions, which you, I, and none of us have a say in those. Um, this is done by an actuary and they're professionals in, in doing these actuarial evaluations. Um, the valuation is always done calendar year, even though you guys are fiscal year. So if you see December thirty-first in there, that's correct. That's when the actual, actuarial valuation is, um, performed. So here's a summary of the, some of the assumptions that were used in their calculation. Um, so we look here, our total pension liability and the various things that make it up, um, our planned fiduciary net position, so that's the, the funds that are available to meet that obligation. So this is where the actuary is determined that is your fut, your liability to fully fund your pension based on the terms, um, of your pension plan. And this is what you have available to fund it right now, which brings us down to our net pension liability. Um, the planned fiduciary net position, again, that's affected by investment activities. So in a year of, of growth, it's great, and then a year when the market tanks, it, it looks bad. Um, but what the, the state looks for is that your, your pension is funded at at least sixty percent. Um, and I believe you guys are funded at about sixty-seven percent, which is on a, a subsequent schedule there. So that's what they're looking for. Um, if you're underfunded, you get a nasty grant from them and they want you to explain how you're gonna fund it. Um, so you guys are still looking, although that's a pretty hefty liability, you're still looking, um, in the eyes of the state, that's, that's helping. More on the pension there, um, deferred inflows and outflows and how that's gonna be expensed over time. This is your, uh, fixed defined benefit plan. This is closed, um, and it's getting smaller and smaller each year, so I'm not gonna go too in detail of that. It ended with a pension liability of a hundred and sixty, over a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. This is the Housing Commission. So we do have to put it out here for the contingent liability with the continued work on, uh, the pollution mediation for the P F A S that was found in the old landfill. Um, we have a subsequent event on the, um, dredge work that the subcontractor hit the nut shed on, and the damage to the Riverwalk. Um, here's that restatement for the correction of an error, uh, in the G A S B eighty-seven calculation this year. Tax payment summary. There was one new accounting standard implemented this year. You're not gonna see very much of a change. It has to do with how the restatements are reported, just giving a little bit more detail. Um, and then this last note here is just for the USDA. They like to see the water and sewer fund presented in, together, um, combined for, um, some of the debt that the city has that was issued on one system. So quickly, I know I'm running out of time here. So these are those pension schedules. Uh, again, there's not, this is just a breakdown over the years of what I've already discussed. Um, you can see that sixty-seven down at the bottom, sixty-seven percent funded. Um, this shows that the actuarial determined contribution was met. Um, you guys paid what they determined to be required. Pension plan here, so here's our budget, um, for the general fund. Um, everything was in budget with the exception of transfers. Um, more funds were transferred out than budgeted, and we'll get into a, a little bit more detail as I move through these. Um, Major Street Fund, this was, good, um, in budget. And then we have, uh, over expenditure also in the Local Street Fund. Um, and so when we do financial statements and we're looking at budget violations, we have to, we have to apply the material on the, on the financial statement side of things onto what our audit determines to be material. Um, but the reality is that the state of Michigan further weeds that out and they're only concerned for, um, budget violations that are in excess of ten percent of the total expenditures and other financing resources of that fund. And it even goes deeper there. Um, so actually, the budget violation this year, so we have to evaluate every special revenue fund regardless of it's, if it's reported in the financial statements or not. Um, so the general fund and the local street fund, those are gonna get weeded out as immaterial by the state. Um, but the Building Inspector Fund here was quite a bit over, um, budget and we don't have an overall detail, cause it's not required to be put in the financial statements, but it is required to be disclosed as a, a budget violation. Um, so Ed can chime in, but essentially it, it came about because of those, um, the Building Inspector, uh, services being brought in-house and just the transition there of overlooking, um, the funds were available. So revenue was up just as much as the expenditures were, but unfortunately, that's not, they don't, they don't care about that. They want to see that the budget was formally amended to account for the additional expenditures, even if the revenue covers it. So, um, they'll send a letter and it's, if there's any violation that you're gonna have or any non-compliance you're gonna have, the budget is the easiest one to resolve.
So Tori, the language for the response that I gave, I didn't see it in here and I didn't see it towards the end, is that gonna get inserted somewhere?
It, it actually, it's updated online, it's just not updated on board.
Oh, okay, alright, perfect.
So we go down here. So these are just our combining schedules, I'm not gonna spend time here. Um, lastly, this is the, the letter on compliance. Um, so again, it goes through, there's material weaknesses and internal control. And, and that's when we feel that there is a weakness in internal control that can cause material misstatement or fraud to occur. Um, and then significant deficiencies or a lower level of a deficiency, um, but it, it's something that we feel that we need to bring attention to, um, city council for. We didn't note either, uh, material weakness or significant deficiencies that warrant attention. Um, we did note the non-compliance matter, uh, the budget violations, um, because it is in violation of state statute. Uh, but here, Ed, here is that response that was updated. Yeah, so I'll send you the updated draft so you can double-check it. Um, I tweaked it a little bit just to include that you're aware of the general and local street, but that it doesn't hit the ten percent threshold there.
And so just for, for councilmember Smith and councilmember Grabowski, the hundred and sixty-three thousand for the general fund?
Yes.
That's to cover all the engineering expenses for the E D A grant that we haven't seen a dime for. And I had to do it right at the end of the year when I was preparing for the audit, so we didn't have time to do a budget amendment. And then the public works was probably an invoice that came in after the end of the fiscal year. Um, you never know the timing on projects, so that one's really not a big deal cause it's a project that was already approved, we just didn't get the budget amendment. And this happens from time to time, we haven't had one in a few years, but it, it's pretty typical. Um, the public safety bill, or the building inspector, we should have a much better handle of that for the next year's budget and throughout this year now that we're kind of not using SafeField anymore. We had overlap there, there was bills coming in, there was revenues and stuff, so that should be better for next year.
I already circled them.
What's that?
I already circled them.
Yeah, it's, uh, it happens, um, especially because you can't make budget amendments subsequent to year-end. So six-thirty, you're done, and so sometimes those things that do trickle in and you're like, oh, we forgot about that invoice, you know, when you're doing, uh, year-end appeals and stuff. It, it does happen. So again, if there's any violation that's easy to appease the state, it's the budget violation. Lastly, if this, this is that communication letter to the city council, um, and it just kind of goes through, talks about what we communicated with you guys in the beginning of the audit, um, any significant audit matters. So it discusses that we implemented that new accounting policy, um, for restatements and, and corrections of errors. That's Oprah. Uh, it goes over the estimates, significant estimates. Um, there was no difficulties in. There was no difficulties in performing our, our audit. The corrected and uncorrected misstatements. So during our audit, we have to accumulate any known and likely misstatements that we identified. So something that we noted as different that are above clearly trivial. So we'll go through that at the end. We did have two this year and just because they were audit differences don't necessarily mean it's anything to warrant concern or anything along those lines. We're just saying, hey, these were audit differences we have. You have the option if you want to change them or not. If you don't, it's not materially misstated and we'll just pass. There were two material adjustments that we're just making everybody aware of. The equal loan proceeds, just a reclassification from a loan, a grant to a loan. And then the prior year accrued sick and vacation, we had to reverse out the, the prior year balance. So just simple errors there, nothing again to warrant concerns, but they were material, so we do have to let you know. No disagreements with management, Ed is a pleasure to work with.